Meeting, can we have a roll call?
Ms. Anderson.
Present.
Dr. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant. Mr. Carter.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, item C, Discussion of the Agenda. Do we have any Discussion of the Agenda? I do feel like everyone will have to bear with me today because we have updated our agenda format and I feel like I'm gonna fumble through, so I apologize in advance. We have a motion to accept the agenda for the August 19th regular meeting. Mr. Carter, can we have a second? Ms. Bryant? Okay, can we do a roll call?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant. And Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held on July 8th and the special meetings held on July 11th, 2024 and July 29th, 2024? So moved.
All right.
It was moved by Dr. Turner and seconded by Mr. Kilgore. Can we have a roll call?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant. Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item two, the Mount Healthy Teachers Association. Do we have any information?
I think you've brought consideration of the end of the meeting.
You're welcome, you're welcome. And I believe we'll be discussing, we did the survey, I believe we'll be discussing that further down on the agenda. Thank you for allowing us to do that. Item B, Communications, in special order.
No communications.
Okay. Item C, are there any announcements?
No.
Okay. We do have recognitions though, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay?
We do. So. Are you getting him? We have a summer graduate. And completed their diploma, working extensively with Dr. Wilson at her department. English is not their first language, so it took a little bit longer to complete the diploma, but we are very excited for Ishmael and his family and they're coming in. So when they come in, Amy will be with them. I looked over for our principal, Amy Criswell, and we will just present that. And then if the board could come up and get a picture with him. His family did come to the summer graduation but got the time wrong. And so they were actually in the parking lot and that night later on. And so we just wanted to give the opportunity because it is a very big deal for them. Sakazada, is he coming? Family member in a wheelchair. So, once the elevator goes in, that will be very, much easier. Sakazada.
Okay.
I guess I could just turn that one on.
What? Oh, yeah. I don't.
Thanks for your patience.
I think I hear them.
Come on in.
Hello. Come on in, have a seat.
Hi.
I gotta write it down, it's just, you know.
Great. Great. Thank you for joining us tonight, Ishmael. You wanna come up, please? Tonight we have with us Ishmael Sakazada, did I say that correctly? And Ishmael graduated this summer. And so we are very pleased. This is Amy Criswell. She is the principal of our high school. She's gonna present Ishmael with his diploma. And we're also going to. Ishmael worked very hard for this. We're very proud of him. Would you like to speak to your family?
Wassalamu alaikum, as you all families. Thank you so much. He's my classes last day. He's a year in school, Mount Haley High School. Thank you so, so much. He's our teacher, his principal, you and you, saying thank you so much. It's all my high school principal, teacher. It's thank you, thank you so much.
Ishmael, let's get the Board of Education up here. This Board of Education, take a picture with you. So if you wanna hold your diploma and they will surround you, maybe you can put it outside of this. Congratulations, Ishmael.
My brother, or big brother is coming.
What's that?
My brother is coming.
Okay. Oh, he's on his way?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you wanna take a picture with your family?
Bryce said he was gonna take a picture. Okay. Bryce is good. You're ready, he's gonna take a big picture out of front of you.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
Okay. No, is my brother coming?
Okay. Congratulations again. Congratulations.
Great. We have one more special recognition tonight. So, we are very fortunate at Mount Healthy to have a lot of amazing people who have joined us and are working with us. So I'd like Dr. Wilson to come up, please. Come on up, Dr. Wilson. So Sarah works with our Student Services and works very long and hard with that department. So we nominated Sarah for the Kristin Holz Rising Star Award. This is a statewide award, and she received it. So we're thrilled that Sarah has received this award. It is very well deserved, and we are so thankful that she is at Mount Healthy. So congratulations.
Okay.
Thanks, Sarah.
Congratulations. Dr. Hawkins, was that the end of your recognitions?
It is, yes.
We'll be moving on to public input. We do have one speaker, Frederica Richardson. There you are. Yeah, if you'd like to come up to the podium. Give your name, your relationship to the district, and you do have three minutes to speak, Ms. Richardson. Thank you.
Sure. It's all, okay. Well, good evening, Board, community members and coworkers. I asked for permission to speak with you this evening. It was suggested by Jennifer, who, Suthoff, who is our, I guess, who's helping us with treasury-type responsibilities, that we be given an opportunity to possibly speak with the Commission regarding the 006 budget and how things are a little bit different for us than general fund or 001. So I am the Food Service Director, responsible for that fund, and I just kinda wanted to be given the opportunity, and I don't know if this is how I should be axing, but I didn't know any other way to do it, given the opportunity to speak with the Commission. I have had some conversation with Ms. Thomas, who is on the Commission, and she encouraged me to do this as well. She said, "Just ask, because we do wanna speak to you," because she feels that the Commission may not understand how our processes work. And I just want you to know, I understand why I have to do what I'm doing, even though we have over $500,000 in the bank. But I understand that we have to do it because they wanna make sure that food service does not overspend. Well, I've been here for 23 years, starting my 24th year, and I have not overspent in that time. So I just really would like to have the opportunity. The main reason why I'm up here is because just recently, we had some emergency equipment that needed to be repaired. And unfortunately, we weren't able to get it repaired. We also, because of them pushing it back, we weren't able to do our preventive maintenance, which we do every year, to help save some money. Because if you have them come in ahead of time and look for problems, they can make the adjustments to our equipment. And when I say equipment, I mean like our heating and cooling equipment. They can do those little quick fixes and it ends up not costing us quite as much, because we have to pay for them to come out. And then we have to pay for them to come out again, because we have to wait for the approval. So the main purpose is to request that maybe we can have them consider a quicker process for emergencies, especially for food service equipment. Because when a refrigerator, when a walk-in goes down, or when our reach-in refrigerators that's on our serving line goes down, or if a heating unit goes down, we need that to be repaired right then. It took over a week to get the approval, and now we have to get approvals for things that are, that if it's on a contract that's less than $5,000, it's just too much. It's really too much, considering that we are in a department that has a cash flow, a constant cash flow coming in. I can't recall the name of that, but we're always gonna get reimbursed, so it might look like we don't have the full amount for a year, but it will come eventually, but we are reimbursed. And we bring in almost $2 million a year. So we have the money to cover our expenses. So that's just it. Just pleading that maybe we could ask the Commission to adopt a quicker process for emergencies. I'm currently waiting for approval for a garbage disposal that's $7,000, the commercial grade. And I know that doesn't sound like much, but when you're handling all the trash that we are, we need that to be happening. So, you know, we haven't had it, school started. And then also, I'm waiting for refrigeration repair. So, that's it. Just wanted to plead my case. Thank you for your time. Thank you for listening.
I do, I do agree that there does need to be a better process, and we are working on that. I know Mr. Pendleton is, is trying to help us right now kind of rein that in so that we're getting things through a little bit quicker. As far as speaking to the Commission, I do believe that they do have public input in their, in their meetings most of the time. So if you sign up, just like you did for the Board, if you sign up to basically say all these things at the Commission meeting as well, or have a representative say that.
It has to be on the agenda for them to speak.
Yeah.
Could we request that that be put on the agenda?
Yeah, like preventative maintenance, or in this case, something goes down, or again, if you have preventative maintenance going on, they can look at you, publish it before the emergency arrives.
Okay. And I believe Ishmael's family has arrived, the rest of them. So Ishmael, would you like to, Bryce, do you wanna take a picture? Okay. So if you want to follow Bryce Blanton, they have an area set aside for you to take your picture. Okay? Okay. Let's congratulate Ishmael again. Congratulations, Ishmael. And your family can take, be in the picture as well. Oh, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, okay. Okay, we can do another, maybe in front of the screen? So the whole, maybe in front, yeah, that'd be great. That'd be great. Right. I'm just gonna get out of the way.
All of your family can come in with you. All of your family, come on in. Yeah, all of your family.
Okay. Here we go. One, two, three. The move. One, two, three. Got it.
Okay.
Congratulations. 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 Congratulations.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, moving on to item F, the Great Oaks Board Report. Some of the recent highlights happening at Great Oaks. There is a new board member. The Board welcomed new board member Spencer Bradley, who will represent Greenfield Exempted Village Schools. Spencer is the Assistant Director of Student Recruitment at the University of Cincinnati, responsible for recruiting students for all online programs at Linnner College of Business. The Board also approved the Education Program Design and Evaluation Committee recommendations of adding 10 new program and course offerings. Among the new programs in the 24-25 school year, Aviation Exploration at Live Oaks, Business Management at Finney Town Secondary, Goshen High School, and Merrymont High School, Junior ROTC at Laurel Oaks, Law Enforcement at Laurel Oaks, Welding at Hillsborough High School, Fiber Optic Cabling Technician at AWD OTC, Power Line Technician at AWD OTC, and Practical Nursing also in AWD OTC. The Board approved two grants for the school year. Aspire Education Grant for $1,279,779, and the Career and Technical Education Planning District, Carl Perkins Adult and Secondary allocations for $171,477.11, and $1,833,850.74 respectively. And finally, the Board approved the Laurel Oaks Expansion Project Phase 1 bid acceptance of $1,502, I'm sorry, $1,502,715.69 from FX Facility Group. The Board passed a resolution to accept the construction design for the Laurel Oaks Expansion Phase 2. Demolition of the northwest, sorry, northeast wing and Scarlet Oaks has begun for the rebuild of classrooms and lab space for fire exercise science, early childhood education, and adult state-tested nurse assistant and licensed practical nurse. You're welcome. Okay. At this point, for the members of the audience who do not wish to stay for the business portion of the meeting, now is the appropriate time for you to leave the meeting. It's, that one's next. It's item three. That's all right, we'll get there. All right, item three, the Legislative Liaison Report. Mr. Carter?
Well, really, there is no legislative liaison report, because not much happened. Senate Bill 112, it's just focused around the governor making sure that doors and things across the school districts get checked for safety. But beyond that, there is no legislative report, so I defer till next month.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to item four, Report of the Treasure. Mr. Pendleton, did you wanna take?
Thank you very much. We're gonna do a presentation tonight, walk you through quite a lot of information with Oversight Commission and update.
Okay.
So last month, I talked to the Board about progress monitoring. And progress monitoring is more about what we're doing in district, working with staff, working on appropriations and policies and procedures.
Did you get that meaning?
It's a confidence building exercise. It's a confidence building exercise for us, being new to the equation.
A confidence exercise to stakeholders, Board, staff, local taxpayers. And tonight we have an update. I would consider it progress monitoring, but it's really along the lines of what the Financial Recovery Plan and Oversight Commission is requesting and/or requiring of us. So this memo, I'm gonna walk through the memo. It is a summary of the Financial Recovery Plan. You know, that's a really thick document, but this is a summary memo from me to the Board of Education.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Are you guys okay?
Yes.
All right. So I wanna walk through the memo, point by point. And the reason I wanna do that is I wanna make sure the Board is unanimous in its understanding of where we are in the process, what documentation you've received, and what recommendations we're asking the Commission. And the Commission meeting is next Thursday. So let's walk through point by point here. And you have a copy of this. In Board Docs, all of these documents are also linked, and the majority of them are public-facing. The only time that we don't link something public-facing is if that doesn't meet our directory information for the Board and your Board policy, or it's something that might be confidential to law, or you've yet to vote on something. All right, so the Financial Recovery Plan had an immediate implementation, and I'm gonna quickly cover some of these immediate ones. I think you're probably aware of them. And the plan states that the district must redact all personal identifiable information. And that's been done in the current FRP and all following documents. They've all been redacted. They can list names, employee names, and they can list salary amounts, that they don't have any other personal identifiable information. You're good? The Commission directs the Board of Education Superintendent, all staff, to cease and desist purchasing without having proper approvals in place. And the reason, and anytime you see an underline, it is hyperlinked. So it's hyperlinked for the Commission, hyperlinked for you or anybody else. When they pull down Board Docs, they can see that we've completed that. And to conversation about food service or other purchase orders, unfortunately, they've come to a very slow process. That unfortunately is by design until we build that confidence level up, build the systems back up, and then those will start to more freely flow. So those memos are attached, and we've definitely met that requirement. Effective July 1st, the district is directed to implement best practice of obtaining three quotes for purchase orders. And I won't read the rest of that. I think this, you know about this. This relates to your Board policy for competitive bids and what the Board approves. We put together a Google Sheet. That Google Sheet was pushed out to the district. It modeled what the Commission's request was. And having a single point of contact, again, this is a big ask for staff, but single point of contact, go through the Board Docs, it then flows directly to us. We populate with Levanda the Board agendas and make sure the appropriations there, make sure the appropriate procedures are in place, and we feel that we have met that requirement. The August, August implementation items are quite a bit more, they're a much more sizable request to the district and us to complete. The first one is the Commission hereby requires a Superintendent to reconcile the most May five-year, the most recent May five-year forecast to the FRP. That is highlighted or hyperlinked, the Financial Recovery Plan. And you have a summary of that Financial Recovery Plan, and I wanna show you that document here. And I'm gonna tab through the Financial Recovery Plan, because I would like for you to see exactly what's included in a Financial Recovery Plan. If we printed this out, it would be a small book. The summary page, you do have a copy of. The summary page, you do have a copy of. The first tab is Instructions. This next tab is the May five-year forecast. And if you can see, the May five-year forecast has that delta, that deficit of minus 13 million and some change. And that's the number when we started and onboarded that we were working through. And remember those early days, the cash flow? We were thinking that cash flow, we wouldn't have cash flow through September. The district and our team went through every piece of board minutes, board action, checked payroll records, we triangulated data, and that's a really important process for the commission to hear that we're just not taking a single minutes piece of paper, we're checking with other departments to validate that those reductions have been made. We went through a change in assumptions on that first tab. So when we came onboard, and I know this is, this is not something we want to show in detail to any board at this level in spreadsheets, but we're required to. We would typically give you an assumptions page, what changed from the previous budget forecast. So those numbers you can't, you can't really see, but what I would like for you to take away is the change in assumptions was our first round, what changed from the May five-year forecast to maybe that first month that we were working with the district. Revenue enhancements, unfortunately for public schools, are very, very little, and we'll talk about a couple of those. And this tab is where the majority of the detail and work is, and that's the expense reduction part. That first part is purchase services, and then below that, for the next 400 or so lines, are salaries, benefits, and all related staffing components. There's about 110 less, 110 less employee FTEs as a result of the financial condition and where we are now. They're all reflected here. That last page is what you have a copy of. So the updated forecast is, it's pulling May in, then all of those changes that those tabs represent, called the plan impact. And the current deficit stands at 4.9 million. Now, if you remember from the presentation we had last month, remember it was about 4.7 million. So this is, this is modulating a little bit, and as we're reading every contract, every purchase order, there's work that the district did that's still not yet reflected, and that's the part where we're gonna get to recommendations that's really important. The good part about this, even though it's a couple hundred thousand, we now have another document and another month of data that's saying we're within a narrow margin. That's a good, this 4.9 million dollar deficit is not a good component. It's not a, it's not a good number. We need to resolve that this year in the black, but that's a good number because our original estimate was 4.7 million. All right. Let's, let's keep working through. I know this is a lot, so I apologize. So we covered that first part. That next one at the top was the commission hereby directs the district to develop a revenue enhancement strategy. And there's not much to follow up with that. You'll see, the district did implement a pay-to-participate that is estimated to bring in around $40,000. It is a, it's an important number. It represents a community's ability to participate in this equation. It is an important number, but that's an early estimate at that point in time. That's about it you can do on revenue. Dr. Hawkins and I talked about, most importantly, we want to retain our students. That's where the majority of our revenue would be. There's another on school fees, but we were able to have a conversation with DEW about this is a Community Elder Building Partnership District, which means we do free lunch and breakfast, which means as part of our federal process, we waive all fees. And that's, there, there won't be any additional revenue there. Some additional detail on FY '24 expenses, and highlighting any shared services, and I would like to highlight the district, even before hiring us, you work with the Educational Service Center to, you have a contract on for seven-figure contract to do many purchase service and shared service. You also have grants management, transportation. Those are all shared service, so I think the district deserves some credit in the report for those, and we documented those. The next is staffing costs. There is a spreadsheet that I'm gonna show you here. It's de-identified by employee. This is what's gonna be submitted in the plan, and this is all active employees by salary, by building. Obviously, it's a long list. But I'd rather show you the chart, so the chart gives you some credit for the work that has been done, and that's fiscal '24. This is fiscal '25, so that's the '24-25 school year, and that has been a significant reduction in expense. When we get to the recommendation part, I want you to kind of picture this as a really important component of what we're going to ask the commission for as a result of this report. The same was asked that we review purchase service. So here's an area, I think at the last meeting, I talked about that confidence building exercise. When we look back to prior forecast, you can sometimes find that point in time where you have much more confidence in the numbers and you go back to it. This is purchase service back to 20, is that 2019? And it's really difficult to get a baseline on purchase service. And in the report, if you want to pull that down, this is where we spend on regular instruction, special education, vocational. It gives you, and we can take it to any deeper level that you want to see. But there's quite a bit of, I would call it noise in trying to find what a good baseline is. It's difficult to find this. And this is the fiscal '25 number. And unlike that staffing number, which showed a significant reduction, I believe that there are contracts that the district didn't engage in for this school year where that number will improve. So I, I think this number will improve, but I ask the commission in the Department of Education for a little bit more time, and we'll talk about that in a few minutes. The top bullet point there is fiscal '25 budgets. And as of last week, all budgets were entered into the system. Another recommendation we have is for some more modern budget overlay, so we can start to push that out in emails to staff where they can see their budgets are fully loaded now. Part of the problem with our public address to the board has been, the district did not have budgets set the last couple of years. There, there was no reflection of internal budgets that we could see. That doesn't mean that you were, you were spending illegally. There was an appropriation resolution. There are some in front of you tonight. But the budgets are loaded. Unfortunately, and here's the difficult part, when you're in fiscal emergency, every single purchase order is evaluated, regardless of general fund or federal fund. I think it's a valid question. Food service fund O6 is treated like a federal fund because of federal reimbursement. I think that is a, it's a good ask to make the commission, as well as our federal funds. The problem is when you are, when those funds are coming into your bank account, and that bank account is under the stress that it is right now, that's why they're saying we're gonna evaluate every single one of those requests. The other part about that is we didn't have enough money that we could certify coming in and in the bank account to ask for the authority to spend. That's why, and in treasurer's world, anytime that we ask for anything less than 100% of a budget on a year, it takes a lot more work. We don't want to do that. So we do have a budget to present to you tonight that is quite a bit more comprehensive. The middle bullet there, the commission directs the treasurer's office to conduct analysis of credit cards, distribution, usage. We sent a memo out, we collected all credit cards, they now reside within the treasurer's office, and we're evaluating those now. It would be nice to get to a level where we could free up some of those cards for emergency purposes. However, we need to have requisition purchase order in place, and that was the part about the cease and desist, about you can't execute a purchase without the requisition in place, knowing that there were funds available. So I, I would imagine, so, you know, put me on the spot, within, within the next few weeks, purchase orders should start to flow a little better, because the, the backstop for that is the appropriation resolution, which you have, and it's almost a full appropriation resolution. And then two, once the auditor's office are done with the credit card review, we might be able to put a couple of credit cards out for purchasing and professional development. The last bullet point is the Financial Recovery Plan Workbook and accompanying notes. There are, we have started to work ahead a little bit into their, into their September and October implementation, so I just wanted you to have some notes with that. And then I want to jump to recommendations and then cover a couple documents that you have yet to see. The reason I left those as strikeouts is so that you can see the progression of where we are. So the first one I asked for is the, asked the commission to consider, and it's really not the commission, but the commission, once approved, would go to DEW, to forego the advance repayment. And it's referenced loosely as a loan, but it's actually an advance on our future foundation aid. So something that I was considering, but I struck that after a conversation with the department today. The third was ask the commission for additional solvency assistance, which we may still have to do in the future. The fourth is to implement SCVIEW. You already have done one of those in board docs. Board docs is the new board documentation process. Eventually, we're gonna get to a laptop or a Chromebook where we can see, you can see all those attachments. Prior to the meeting, you see all those attachments, and then the public can download that from the website and see all the attachments and follow along. SCVIEW will significantly improve purchasing throughout the district, its electronic workflow. You can see and receive a weekly email from SCVIEW that says, here's how much budget money I have, here's what's been spent. It's more of that year-to-date budget versus actual. Now, up until this afternoon, I was operating under the directive that the commission required us to submit and approve a Financial Recovery Plan that had a balanced budget. So I'm gonna say that, I want to say that again. Up until today, I was operating under the assumption that we were required to submit a fiscal '25 plan that showed a positive number here. Now, when the volume of reductions that the district has made in contract reductions for purchase services, and we're still paying out the remainder of those employee salaries, we have yet to see what a good enrollment number would be. After Labor Day is the best time to start taking a look at that. I asked the commission, I asked the Department of Education that our recommendation be that we submit a Financial Recovery Plan that would address that structural deficit with one of those recommendations by October 15th. Because what I didn't want to do is not fulfill their requirement and then further disadvantage this team. Because if you fail to do that, they obviously can take additional action with the district. So they did say, your recommendation can be to ask the department and commission for additional time as your confidence builds to address that 4.9 million. And I will give you some areas where I think things will improve. I think the benefits line item that we have attached to the staff is a little too high yet, but I really want to see what this first payroll in September is gonna look like. It's kind of the trust-but-verify part of this. There's a lot less staff on our rosters, but I want to see all the pay run out done, and then see what that first and second pay of September look like. And come back to you and report in September, September board meeting, and maybe we have a special board meeting in October. Did we say that was October 14th? Okay, so we're a couple, we're one day in advance of that recommendation if they'll accept that. So we have a couple more touchpoints between now and then. So I think we'll improve on our benefits line item. We will find out if any unemployment is submitted against those reductions in force. So that could be a substantial number. We don't anticipate that, but that obviously could push us the other way, so I want to make sure the commission knows we're evaluating that. I think purchase services will improve, and that also gives us time to get a firm headcount and evaluate that staffing requirement part, which was highlighted in the commission. We've got some really good reporting. We've got some really good reporting by student, teacher, student-staff ratio, but I really want that student piece to be accurate so that we can tell them with all the confidence in the world if we are to request additional money, or if we are to say, can you suspend the loan repayment or extend it over a longer period of time? We have a really high confidence level. And I told you at that point in time, I wanted a 90% confidence level to get to that point. So I was very happy with the department's directive to us. So when, when I ask for your approval tonight, you are approving... Item two. Is you're accepting that you had a chance to review the Financial Recovery Plan tonight, and you have those documents, and that we are asking the commission for additional time to evaluate actual expenses and revenues for that, that matter, and report back through September by October 15th. And for those of you who want to get even deeper in the weeds, like that wasn't enough, there is a monthly spending plan. That's this document here. That compares budgets to actuals where we're going over every single line item by revenue and by expense with the commission, actually with the department prior to the commission. So I think that's a good accountability tool there. Okay. That concludes my report outside of the other items in the treasurer's recommendations. So I can take any questions, or I'll sit down and take questions.
I think that was very helpful. I don't have, do you guys have questions? Okay. No, thank you. That was very helpful. It made everything very clear. Oh, no.
Something that I would prefer to do with the board is to go over assumptions and trends and those kind of things, but this is what they require us to do.
Well, I think right now, we appreciate having more, more info than, than what we're used to, so I appreciate that. Okay, I think we left off at item B, contracts.
I have a chance to look through your board docs. Item B is all the contracts. This is the format, and thank you to Lavanda in getting board docs up and running. The commission members really like this format, very, they... The commission members really like this format, very, they, and Ruth, but mostly Lavanda. So, item B is contracts, and all of those are listed, and this meets the commission's requirements.
Okay. Before we look over and discuss it, could I have a motion to accept, where are we? I've lost my, I've lost my spot. Accept the school district contracts as presented.
So moved.
Certainly.
Dr. Turner, Mr. Kilgore, okay. If you all want to take just a few moments to look over those contracts. I looked through these earlier, and I do have a couple of questions. University of Cincinnati CEE, CES, I don't know what, what exactly is that?
Which number?
Oh, I'm sorry. Number 15, line item 15.
I can talk about that.
Okay.
So, that is a transition program that are Of course, I just see one of those. UCC is a transition program that our students with intellectual disabilities and multiple disabilities participate in through the University of Cincinnati. So, they go down to UC and participate in a transition program a couple days a week for a semester. Through that program, they learn variety of job skills, life skills, community skills, and then also earn a credential. So, last year, all of our students who were in the program earned a credential for graduation through that program. This year, we did cut it, so instead of sending, I think last year it was 16 students, this year we're sending eight. And we identified the students who very much need that credential to benefit from that program, and then we're also cutting transportation. So, we're going to do metro transportation so that the students can receive travel training as a cost-saving measure to the district as well.
Okay. And then I have a question about line item 16. I see that the University of Cincinnati for the graduation is crossed out. Can we discuss why that's crossed out? Is there a reason for that?
That met a difficulty in approving as to whether or not that was proper public purpose in spend for now.
Approving with the state?
Yes.
The state doesn't want it?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I, I would say, I'm, no, because I want to live by the values that we talked about, that this, this expense did not meet a threshold for my team either. It did not meet a threshold, knowing that it would likely get some feedback from the commission, and when I say me, I say my team of six licensed treasurers, but unfortunately, we didn't feel this should proceed.
Ryan, can I ask a question on this one? So, I know many schools in the area, as you see in Centos, how do they approach that expense? Is it, are you saying it meets the threshold because we're in fiscal emergency, or that it would never be an appropriate expense?
I know the districts that we kind of surveyed, which were most of our districts, there's ones that would never meet the threshold that they would do this kind of expense.
So, just in, in that area?
Oh, no. This is rural, urban, suburban.
I guess, I'm just asking the question because in our area, I can only think of maybe one school that even, that has graduation at the school. So, is it just more common in different areas? Or, I'm just wondering how all the schools get around that, you know, because?
I think the threshold should be that the district is in fiscal emergency, and the commission can approve or deny a financial recovery plan, and if they do not have confidence in the district to say, if there are additional budget reductions that cannot be made, then why would you approve this? And that is the standard that we're operating under, is also a standard that we're operating under, that, that is half of a first-year teacher's salary, and we have 110 less FTEs in district, and that is also a measure. So, at this point, when the commission and the Department of Education ask me to say, do you think that there are additional budget reductions that can be made, or will that number improve giving us additional time? I think that answer is yes. I think that there will be additional items reduced.
I appreciate that. So, I just wanted to clarify, so we should, this isn't an item that, once we go through August, September, October, and we feel a little bit more confident in our savings, that we would be able to do this. So, this is something that we should go ahead and tell our seniors now, that we will not be able to have that.
If, unless the district can balance its books without solvency, solvency assistance or a deferral, then yes. I cannot imagine this expense coming back.
Dr. Hackett, are there other option, I mean, is it, are there options for us to do, or, I mean, maybe, Mr. Pendleton, you know, because if you experience districts that don't have these graduation fees that they're using, I mean, what, what are our options? What I don't want is to wait until we are in a situation where we can't do anything for the seniors.
We, there are, you know, we could definitely have graduation at the high school. The challenge with that is that our space is limited, and so, you know, graduation is a celebratory event. You know, it's a once-in-a-lifetime event for many of our students, as you saw earlier tonight, how much it means to our students and our families. When you have it in your building, then you have to tick it. And so, you say, student, you can bring two people. A lot of our families are maybe parents who have remarried, or they want to bring their grandma, or they want to bring other people, just like you witnessed tonight. So, it changes it from an event where we are, let's celebrate, to it becomes very adversarial because we have to hire people to do the tickets. We have to hire, we also tried to get a quote on what it would cost to do it on the football field, and it was a little over $10,000 to bring in a stage and bring in chairs and bring in that. Now, you don't have to do that. We could do it in the gym and tell each student that they could bring two people. It just changes the dynamic. And so, that's why I was just asking the question, because it is very common in our area. If you go down to Centos, they have graduations two and three a day from all of our local schools every couple hours. It is the norm in our area. It is abnormal to actually have it at the school still. So, I do think, you know, that's just something we're going to have to grapple with, because there are other expenses that some people might be like, why can you spend this much money on this, but yet you can't do this when it directly impacts our students, our community, our culture, you know, the rewards? But that's just something I think we have to define, and if the commission, that's why I wanted to ask, because if it's, let's put this off, and hopefully we still have the date, that's one conversation. But if it is, we are not going to be able to do it, then we just, we need to let the families know ahead of time. I mean, we could have smaller, you know, we could do smaller groups and have several graduations, so they could bring more people, but then it just changes, it changes the feel of it, because you're not with your whole class. But those are things we need to just really explore with our community and ask what they would prefer if that's not going to happen.
Right. And my, my thought on it is that it's not a zero, you know, we're not zeroing out this line. It's, it's, we're taking 18,000 off, but there's going to be 10,000 added on or some number.
Well, not necessarily.
Well, no, they could say no. They could say, do it in the gym.
Right.
And so, if it's in the gym.
We got to do security.
Well, security's at the high school. It just has a different feel, you know?
My original question was just, just, are there options, which it sounds like there are. I think that it's, I don't like that it's being taken off. I understand what you're saying, Mr., I appreciate your explanation. I appreciate you doing things to try to get us approved by the commission. I know that, that that is exactly why you're with us, and, and I am not, I'm not opposed to, to your expertise. I just, I think that, I just want a clarification on, on what that alternative looks like and how we move forward, knowing that, that this is an item that we're going to have to change up a lot. So, I mean, I think if, if there are still ways to do it, and there are still options that we have, you know, and this is pretty much our only choice, it seems like, right?
Well, the other part, we can start working towards trying to find a donor.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a fairly big number, but, you know, we could try to put something, ask people if they would be willing to donate. I'm not saying that that is going to happen, so I would never promise that to our seniors, but we are trying to work to that end, you know, because it is more than just getting a diploma. You know, it is a community celebration, so, you know, I don't know. We can start working on it and see.
How long do we have to make this decision before we know, we have to tell the seniors that we have to go to a different plan? What is that date?
Reserve, how you, how this venue works, as well as the others. If you have a date in the past, you have a certain amount of time, you're given priority for that date. So, this May 19th is the same day that we used last year. They hold it for us for about a month or so. If we do not give a deposit, that date is freed up. So, if at a later time, we then have the money, we would call UC again and say, is that date still open? If it is, no problem. If it's not, they would say, here are the dates that are open. We could go that direction. I would say that we would start working on this immediately, and if by December, by the end of the year, we do not have, I'm going to say, reliable source for paying this in a donation or some other way that is acceptable from the commission, then we would need to start having community groups on how can we make the experience something that is special and celebratory, but utilize our own facilities. So, we would have to, you know, and that, that could be a smaller, I mean, we have the auditorium, which is nice. I mean, it could be that we just do smaller groups. I, you know, I don't know what that would look like.
What comes to mind is, when I was graduating high school, we had a graduation fee that we paid, and it was, you know, this was 30 years ago, and it was like 100, 200 dollars, something like that. So, I'm thinking, you know, if you have 200 graduates, you know, it might be something we could propose and see if there's traction, because I doubt that any of our graduates would want to have a poor experience because of the situation with, with the, with the district.
I think we have, have, we just have to start working to figure out what, what we decide to do. I mean, Mr. Pendleton, can you, would you be able, just not, not off the top of your head, not right now, in the next couple of weeks or as you work through this, just possibly give us a, a budget for graduation that you think could be approved? What number, so that we know if we decide to do it in-house or whatever, whatever options we have, we know about how much we could spend on that for the seniors and what we could, you know, what alternatives we could look at?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Did anybody have any other questions on these contracts? Okay, can we do a roll call?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Thank you. Item C is, is purchase orders over 5,000, and those are the next three pages.
Okay, as we're looking over those, could I have a motion to approve the district purchase orders over 5,000 as presented, please? Ms. Bryant?
Second.
Dr. Turner?
Okay.
Could someone explain line item number two, the SIR's charge?
Yes. Surcharge is required by the school employees' retirement system. It's a part of pension requirement.
I gotcha. Thank you. Does anybody have any other questions on those? Okay, can we do a roll call?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Thank you. Item D is then-and-nows, and this is that circumstance that we talked about. There are two, unfortunately, for $4,650 for summer school psych eval services, and the other one is for $4,400, and that's skilled nursing services, but they do meet all the requirements after that.
Okay, can we have a motion to approve the following then-and-now certificates?
So moved.
Mr. Kilgore? Mr. Carter's second, all right. That's okay. Okay, can we do a roll call?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Thank you. Item E is the monthly financial reports. As promised, we are still converting those. These are the old reports. I know that we're trying to get away from those. I think by September, we should have our new monthly financial reports. It'd be much easier to read format. On the monthly financial reports, I do want to put it out there into the minutes, and it's included in your handout, that the discrepancy between the bank and the book is over $8,000 off, and it will be disclosed to the auditor's office. Typically, those are to the penny or very small variance, but we're going to continue to kind of go back in months. Once you get behind, it's really difficult to get it reconciled. The month is closed, meaning we're operating in the next month, we're operating in the next fiscal year, but there is a variance that it's above $500, which the auditor's office considers de minimis. It's a substantial amount. So, they'll want to say, where's that $8,000, what's it for? So, we continue to look for that.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the June 2024 and July 2024 monthly financial reports, please?
So moved.
Dr. Turner? Can we have a second?
I'll sit.
Ms. Bryant, second. Okay, can we do a roll call?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Thank you. Item F is permanent and amended certificate. I had a great question up here, the difference between the one with the revised code, section 570536, is a certificate. Those, when all the revenues are met, when all the outstanding expenses are met, these are the funds available. And then I am pleased to present a more complete appropriation resolution. This was with the auditor's state's help. What I mean by a complete is that's this page, with the top number being $40 million, meaning we're asking the board for authority of $40 million of general fund authority to start to free up some more of those purchase orders, so.
Okay. Can we have a motion to approve the permanent appropriations and amended certificate for fiscal year '25?
So moved.
Mr. Carter? Okay, could we have a motion to approve the permanent appropriations and amended certificate for fiscal year twenty-five?
So moved.
Mr. Carter? Dr. Turner? Could we do a roll call?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Thank you. We're getting there here, one more. Uh, approval of financial recovery. So, thanks for bearing with me in that presentation, showing you all the data heavy, the spreadsheets, uh, and then the recommendation, uh, just to bring that back. I have it on the record. It's in that last page of the memo. And as to ask the commission for additional time to evaluate actual expenses and revenue through September and report to the commission by October fifteenth. And we will be submitting the financial recovery plan with all those details. That's highlighted here.
Thank you. Could we have a motion to approve the financial recovery plan?
I'll move.
Mr. Kilgore? Ms. Bryant, second. Could we do a roll call?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pendleton.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to the report of the superintendent, Dr. Hawkins?
Thank you. The first item, there's just a few things that are informational. We do have a change order, change order number thirty-two. There are some angel studs at one oh three rear door at the elevator. There's no cost for that, but there is a change order for that. Secondly, Mount Healthy City Schools has been awarded the continuation of our junior high Twenty-First Century Grant. It is year two of five, and we have been awarded two hundred thousand dollars. So, we are very excited to be able to continue to, you know, meet student needs in some creative ways with that grant. The following will be our expulsion hearing officers for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Dr. Sarah Wilson will be our primary person. Jason Sparks will be a backup, and Jana Wolfe will be a backup. And the five oh four compliance officer for the twenty-four, twenty-five year is Dr. Sarah Wilson. For Title Nine, the people who will be our compliance officers, Shayna Berg and Jason Sparks. And we made a lot of these changes because Dr. Ogden is no longer with the district, so we had to make some shifts. And then our expulsion officer, um, that was a position that was reduced. So, those are just some informational items for the next year. Item B is the acceptance of some donations. We're excited that we have received a few donations. One is the Mount Healthy North Elementary received some items valued at about eight hundred dollars. They were donated by Dick's Sporting Goods, by an anonymous do- donor. Three footballs, eight kickballs, sixteen frisbees, six basketballs, and six volleyballs. We also have a couple other things that came in last minute. We have twenty-five backpacks that were donated by Conger, and they were filled with school supplies. And Love Like JJ donated a hundred and fifty-eight backpacks that were filled with school supplies. So that, you know, we like to have that on hand for our students. If they have that need, it allows our stu- our schools to fill that for them.
Okay, I have a motion to accept the donations listed and authorize the CFO and treasurer to send the letters of appreciation. Mr. Kilgore? Second, and Mr. Carter, could we do a roll call?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item C is the approval of handbooks. And these, you know, go through each year. It is the, to approve the high school, junior high, north, south elementary, and the early learning center handbooks for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Okay, could we have a motion to approve the district handbooks for the twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five school year?
So moved.
Dr. Turner? Oh, Ms. Bryant, second. Could we do a roll call?
Um.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did, did we receive those? Were they with the stuff that came with the? Okay, I just missed it, I guess.
Mm-mm. Yeah, I don't think I saw those.
Yeah, I looked at the stuff yesterday. I remember seeing them. I mean, I would remember.
We can wait until next month if those were not sent.
Thanks for slowing me down, Dr. Turner. I didn't realize I've been rushing through all of these. Sorry about that, guys.
Um, I see press copies of them, if you can all look at them. I think if, if it can wait till next month, it's just wait till next month.
Okay. So, do we do a motion to table? To table that item, what is this item?
I'll make a motion to table that and revisit it next month after we've seen them.
Okay, could we have a second? Okay, could we do a roll call on voting to table these item, this item?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Yep.
Thank you.
Item D is the second reading of the bylaw policy change. And it is to rescind the evaluation of teachers on limited contracts. That's something that we can do under Ohio Revised Code. So, with all of our changes this year, we would like that to go through as the second reading.
Okay, could we have a motion to approve the second reading to rescind the following policy? Three two two zero dot zero three, rescind evaluation of teachers on limited contract.
So moved.
Dr. Turner?
Sir.
And Mr. Kilgore? Any questions? Could we do a roll call?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item E is to approve student teacher observer programs. And the recommendation is Mount Healthy City School District participate in the student teacher observer programs for the University of Cincinnati, Xavier University, Mount Saint Joseph University, Miami University, Cincinnati Christian University, Aniok College, Wright State University, Eastern Michigan University, Franklin University, and Grand Canyon University for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Okay, could we have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Kilgore? Second?
Second.
Dr. Turner? Any questions? Could we do a roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item F is to approve clinical experiences for the University of Cincinnati nursing students. This is to approve the participation in the educational affiliation agreement with the University of Cincinnati, the College of Nursing, to provide clinical experiences for nursing students during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Could we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Turner and Mr. Carter? Any questions?
Yeah, who's gonna be overseeing the nurses?
Uh, Sarah and her team works with them, as well as the nurses we have in our building, and make sure that everything is going the way it should be. This just gives us the opportunity to bring in people who need clinical hours to help. But Sarah and her team oversee that.
Now, these nurses will be, they're not gonna be handling any kind of medication or drugs. Just on hands.
Any other questions? Could we have a roll call?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item G is to accept bus routes and bus stops. The recommendation is to accept bus routes and bus stops for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year with the authorization for the superintendents to change the routes as it may become necessary.
Could we have a motion?
So moved.
Dr. Turner? Mr. Carter? Any discussion?
Is it still Peterman doing our bus routes for us?
It is. And we did, you know, eliminate two routes. And we are working with, um, some people that Ryan has suggested, just to look at everything, you know, to see where we can have additional savings. We have to balance that out, because we do get funding for bus riders. And so, we're just looking at that to see if there are savings involved.
Any other questions? Could we do a roll call?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item H is in lieu of transportation. This is the recommendation to approve the following resolution for declaring transportation to be impractical for the twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Whereas the students identified on the attached document have been determined to be residents of this school district and eligible for transportation services. And whereas, after careful evaluation of all available options, it has been determined that it is impractical to provide transportation for these students to their selected schools. And whereas the following factors, as identified in Revised Code three-three-two-seven point zero-two, have been considered. One, time and distance required to provide the transportation. Two, the number of pupils to be transported. Three, the cost of providing transportation in terms of equipment, maintenance, personnel, and administration. Four, whether similar or equivalent service is provided to other pupils eligible for transportation. Five, whether and to what extent the additional services unavoidably disrupts current transportation schedules. Six, whether other reimbursable types of transportations are available. And whereas the option of offering payment in lieu of transportation is provided in Ohio Revised Code, therefore be it resolved that Mount Healthy City School District Board of Education hereby approves the declaration that it is impractical to transport the students identified on the attached document and offers the parents guardians of the students named on the attachment, payment in lieu of transportation.
Could we have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Carter, do we have a second?
Second.
Dr. Turner? Any discussion? Could we do a roll call?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item I is to approve the breakfast and lunch programs. The recommendation is to approve breakfast and lunch programs for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. All students eat breakfast and lunch for free. If students would like to purchase additional breakfast or lunch, the cost would be as follows. Breakfast would be a dollar seventy-five. Elementary lunch would be three dollars. Junior high, senior high lunch, three fifty, and milk would be sixty cents.
Could we have a motion?
So moved.
Dr. Turner? Mr. Carter? Um, and this is paid for with a grant, correct?
Well, um, it comes out of food service. This is just saying that they get breakfast and lunch for free, but if you wanna get more food, you have to pay these prices. So, you're just approving the prices.
That's the free meals are, that's federal program.
It is, it's federal. It's out of the Frederica's account, the free and reduced lunch.
Okay.
I think in the community, there was some concern that we were frittering away money, giving away free and breakfast and lunch.
Oh, no. No, and.
This is federal money.
It is federal money, absolutely. And Frederica does a really good job following every guideline, I don't know if Frederica's still back there, to make sure that we are reimbursed exactly for as much as possible. So, she has done a fantastic job for over two decades in the district, making sure that we follow the guidelines, and they are many, many, many guidelines, to make sure that we get reimbursed for that. So, no, food, breakfast, lunch does not come out of general fund, in the sense that the district is just paying for that.
At one point, I can't remember when it was, some students were able to take a bag home with them for food. Cause there was complaints that some of the neighbors, you know.
Oh, gotcha. Um, there are certain situations where it's not usually through food service, but. That's a different part.
Any other discussion? Could we do a roll call?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item J is to approve substitute rates. Substitute rates for the Center for Collaborative Solutions for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. A subsecretary will be fifteen dollars an hour. Aid secretaries or aid substitutes would be a hundred dollars per day. The daily subrate for a teacher, a hundred and twenty dollars a day. A building substitute teacher, a hundred and forty-five dollars a day. Long-term substitute teacher pay rate, if they've, if they're in a assignment for days one through ten, one forty-five a day. Days eleven through twenty, one sixty-five a day. Days twenty-one through forty, a hundred and eighty-five a day. And days forty-one and on would be two hundred a day.
Could we have a motion?
So moved.
Dr. Turner? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, could we do a roll call?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item K is to approve the following rec- resignations that are listed below.
Could we have a motion?
So moved.
Could we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Carter, your name got cut off on this one.
I see.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Do you have any questions?
No, no, no.
Okay, could we do a roll call?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item L is to reject a resignation. And we are, I'm asking the board to reject the resignation of Tessa Davidson. I'll be happy to explain that after the motion.
So moved.
Dr. Turner, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Kilgore?
So, under Ohio law, teachers must notify the school districts by a date in July that they are planning to resign. That is so that we have time to fill the positions. So, if you notice on the previous list, you might say, well, wait, there was a teacher there. If a teacher moves out of state, we, we have to accept the resignation. If a teacher remains in state, resigns, and then chooses to go to another school after the deadline, the district can send a request to the Ohio Department of Education, and that teacher's license can be held for a year. So, they, if they choose not to work at the school, they cannot work in another public school. Um, we did have a teacher who put in a request to resign, actually, in August, and we said no to that, so that we wanted that teacher to remain so that our classes would be staffed. And so, that's why we are rejecting the resignation. Yeah, she can s- she still resigned, but we will send the paperwork on to, um, Ohio Department of Education and the board action showing that it was not, the resignation was not accepted.
If we expect our teachers to abide by that deadline, then we can't say, oh, it's fine this time, then, then the deadline ceases to have any meaning at all.
And we did have other teachers that we held to their contract this year. So, this was just someone that, um, wanted to go to another school district.
So, she's already gone to another di- what happens if sh- So, she's already gone to another di- what happens if, I mean, what happens if she's already accepted a job and then we reject the resignation?
By law, she's not allowed to accept another job while she's under contract with us. So, if she did do, the teachers are told about that, they know the deadline, they're reminded of it. So, if a district, so let's say that we hired someone, and knowing that they were under contract with another school, right now, their certificate might be valid. When this is reported to the credentialing board and their license is suspended, then they would no longer be employed at that school. They would, because by law, the treasurer cannot pay a teacher if they don't have a valid certificate. So, if they make their certificate not valid for a year, then they would not be paid.
Well, I believe, or at least I've heard, uh, that Cincinnati Public really holds teachers to, I mean, they hold this over them, you absolutely, you don't miss that deadline by even a little. We will, we'll, we'll have the state yank your license so fast, you won't know what hits you. So, um, I don't think we've done that here since I've been on the board, but it is, it is a thing that happens. I mean, like they say, Cincinnati Public, such a big district, they have to be pretty strict about that.
Do we have a teacher to replace this one?
We do now have a teacher to replace. This is an expectation in every school district in the state of Ohio. It's not just something that Mount Healthy is choosing to do, um, in the circumstances that we are. We need to provide the best education we can to our students. We just have the confidence that they can walk away. We currently have another teacher that's trying to get out of their contract. This will just open the floodgates for anybody that happens to find a, uh, 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 or, uh, or impact.
Okay. Is there any more discussion? Can we do a roll call?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item M is the approval of an administrative contract. And I'll give some more detail on that once you do the motion.
Do we have a motion? Dr. Turner? Mr. Carter? Okay.
So, this, we did have a resignation at our junior high. The person left and went to a different school district. We brought in, we found someone who was interested in being a dean of students, and we are paying this salary from title money. So, this is not coming out of the general fund. The other person was in the general fund, so this is not impacting, you know, that area. We also did just, we told them we could only do a one-year contract because, you know, we're seeing where we're at, at the end of this year. So, typically, any type of administrative contract would be two years, but when this person did join us, we explained that because it is title funded, it would be a one-year contract, and then we would evaluate at the end of the year.
Any questions? Can we do a roll call?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item N is to approve continuing contracts. Recommendation to issue a continuing contract to the following certificated personnel in accordance with Ohio Revised Code three-three-one-nine-point-one-one, and the employee is listed.
Do we have a motion? Mr. Kilgore, do we have a second? Dr. Turner? Any discussion? Can we do a roll call?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item O is to approve certificated personnel. Recommendation to issue limited contracts to the following certificated personnel in accordance with Ohio Revised Code three-three-one-nine-point-one-one for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Carter, do we have a second? Ms. Bryant? Any discussion?
Intervention specialists are required by law.
Intervention specialists, yes. They are linked to special education, and the other teachers, we are keeping close track of the twenty-five to one teacher threshold, and we, according to who was signed up to come back, that's why we recommended these staff members. As Ryan mentioned, you know, we don't get a good feel for our actual numbers until actually after Labor Day, but based on who was enrolled to return, we recommended these teachers.
Any other discussion? Can we do a roll call?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item P is to approve classified personnel. Recommendation to issue a one-year contract to the following classified personnel.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Dr. Turner?
Second.
Any discussion? Can we do a roll call?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Dr. Hawkins. All right, were there any special orders? Okay, item seven, open discussion by the Board of Education. Did anyone have anything they would like to discuss? All right. Uh, that's actually item number eight, so moving on to item eight. We have the MOUs for the Teacher Association. We can, I'll just go ahead and do a motion, and then we can take a look at those. We have a motion to approve in section five-point-oh-four-one contained within the bargaining agreement, said member dress code shall be altered to omit jeans from being prohibited professional dress for the attached MOU that we have here. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Dr. Turner? Second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Okay. Um, has everyone had a chance to look over, look over the MOU? What was this one?
Well, that's it, right there. I mean, I think that's, that's the whole thing, right? Just member dress code shall be altered to omit jeans from being prohibited professional dress.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I wonder if we need to, um, be a little bit more specific, like, with students, in the student dress code, I know that, like, they can wear the torn jeans because that's the fashion, that it can be torn above a certain place and all that. I don't want our teachers showing up in the torn jeans. I don't care if it's the fashion. Um, so do we need to be a little more specific about jeans in, in, um, good condition, not torn, not frayed, not, you know, any of those kinds of things? Do we want to specify that a little bit more?
Um, yeah, I, I think that it's reasonable to have expectations on, on having solid jeans without holes in it for the, for the staff and administration. Um, I imagine that the teachers' union is on board with that as well. I mean-
Yeah, and I don't think, even when teachers pay for jeans on Fridays, that's never been an issue.
Okay. Okay.
I mean, I can have our, our labor relations consultant is the one who wrote the MOU, so I can ask her to amend that. I think that, that would be a good idea, because even if it's never been a problem before, all it takes is one teacher who decide, you know, we could hire somebody mid-year who decides, but it doesn't say.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's a good edit. Were there any other, um, things that you feel like we should alter? Oops, sorry, alter or edit on the MOU?
I think the other thing is, you just need to decide about, in the past, they've had to pay to wear jeans, so I think you need to list whatever the decision is. If there's not going to be payment for a year, it should just be detailed, so there's no question.
I-
Well, I think there's a, a little bit of an issue there, right? Because the scholarships that those funds were going towards then become unfunded. So, has there been any consideration about how that's going to be addressed?
Um, there are teachers that have said that they will still donate to the scholarship fund, um, and teachers are willing to help brainstorm other fundraising ideas to help fund the scholarships.
Um. Yeah, I think especially in, in light of some of the other things happening with graduation and, and such, I don't want to take away, or I don't want to risk taking away the scholarships.
How much do we usually raise from that?
Six thousand dollars.
Total? That's for all the scholarships?
For, for wearing jeans. So, the, it's not just in the buildings, you know, like at district office or anyone, all buildings collectively. Last year, it was right at six thousand dollars for the year.
So, that's a big hit.
Mm-hmm. I, I don't particularly think that we should table it, because I know that the year has started and they want to get, if everyone else needs more time, I will be on board with tabling it. I feel like I could come to a decision today personally.
Yeah, I don't think the issues are going to change between, uh, next month if, if related.
Um. I, I think that, in my opinion, I know that the teachers that are still here, um, have taken a lot of hits. I care a lot about the scholarships. I would, I would still want the teachers to help us find the funds. I know, I know you guys are already doing so much, but we're also doing so mu- we all only have so much time. I think that it'll have to be a collective effort. In my opinion, I think I'm, I'm on board with allowing them to, as much as I, it's hard to say it, because we need the money. I think I'm, I'm okay with allowing them to, to not pay the fee, because I know that they're working really hard to keep everything on track for our students as well. Um, but again, I think that I would, I would agree that, to that with the expectation that the teachers work really hard in helping us figure out a plan to make sure that those scholarships still happen, because the students are also giving up a lot and, and working with very little this year as well, so we don't want to take away from them either. So, um, I want to give you guys incentives. I just worry about the effects it will have on the students, so-
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Could we sort of split the difference? Um, something like Fridays are free jean days all the time. Want to wear them any other time, you pay, and we could make it a, a lower payment, because it used to only be Fridays, right? So, if it was a lower payment for any day, it could still raise funds.
In the, in the past, you could only, yeah, you could only do it on Fridays, and you paid a certain amount, couple dollars. Yeah, somebody told me it was three, so I've been paying more than I was supposed to. Somebody told me three, so I've been, I've been paying more, but, um, so-
We could like make Fridays a free day, and any other day, it's a dollar. Like, you know, something, I, I, I understand the teachers saying, you know, we're willing to contribute. I can't see that coming to the six thousand dollars, and without something firm that would be making up the difference, I really do worry about that scholarship fund.
Yeah. I-
Um, my emphasis is, I refuse to pay for jeans, I do. And in fact, I submit the teacher agreement, if we did a collection amongst ourselves, I would donate a ton more, but I will not pay for jeans. I never wear jeans. I will not pay for jeans. I respect your policy. However, I would happily accept if you make a change, but I would work very hard with you to ensure that we took a collection, and if it was me, I would be donating far more than what would ever be asked of by the jean collection. So, I'm optimistic that maybe we could go beyond the six thousand dollars amongst ourselves and work very hard, but maybe however.
Okay, thank you. Well, so, maybe we could say, this will be a, a trial for one year, and we see where we end up, and if it's, you know, way short, then, then we revisit for next year. Uh, maybe we don't give as many scholarships if, if we don't have the funds.
When the, and the jeans money is district-wide, not just-
Yeah.
So, it's, it's just, it's a collection from, yes, and, yeah, it's from, it's from everyone, not just us.
Well, but the thing is, if we, if we do this for teachers, do we, it, it feels like we need to do it for everyone.
Right, we would, whatever is decided, we would do for everyone.
Would we appoint somebody to, to, to lead that donation drive then?
No, we would not. Because I think, I think you need to go into this just realistically. There are people, like you mentioned, that, um, you know, will just come up and say, I want to make a donation, or I'm going to give some money towards something, and we very much appreciate that. However, on the other side, our teachers are asked, every time somebody has a fundraiser, they are the first ones that people run to, including district off- I mean, I've got like six beanies, you know, football wool hats, I've got tons of socks that say Mount Healthy, so they are hit up, I mean, continually in the classroom for those things. So, I think that if the board goes in that direction, teachers are well aware that they can donate if they want to. And, you know, you could put out a statement saying that we are choosing not to do this. If you would like to do it, here is how you do it. But I really, this would be a goodwill gesture of the board to the teachers. I would not then turn it into a, okay, but you got to give us six thousand dollars, you know, in scholarship money.
And that's not, I, I don't intend to make it seem like the teachers are now responsible for six thousand dollars.
I just mean like, it's hard to, you can't mandate that.
No, and I don't intend to. I just, my, my reasoning for, for saying that is just because the students will be losing out with this, and I just want you all to be aware and to help us try to find solutions, not as a punishment to you for being able to wear jeans, not as a responsibility that will fall on you, but just as a responsibility as part of the community to still try to figure this out for the students. That's my request to you, not, not a punishment for the jeans, um.
Yeah, and that, that was why I asked the question that I did, because it, with something like this, the, the danger is that you have so many things that you're responsible for, that's one thing that falls through the cracks, and now you're not thinking about it, right? So, if you don't put somebody, you put somebody's name down and say, okay, you're going to lead this, or it's not on a website saying, hey, we're raising six thousand dollars, then it gets lost, and then you end up in the situation that you don't want to be in, where if you find a way to keep it top of mind, or make it a goal for some organization, whoever that may be, then you're likely to hit your goal.
I think that becomes our responsibility, once we make this choice, that we have to keep it top of mind.
Okay.
And continue to give reminders and, and whatnot. Um, okay. So, with the, with the, um, edits that we're going to have them make, the jeans will have to be, what do we say, without holes?
In good repair.
In good condition, without holes.
It does already say professional, to dress professionally.
Okay.
So, I think that would fall under the realm of professional.
Okay, okay. That sounds fair. Okay, um.
And I can always clarify that. And I can always clarify that and say, business-wise, we mean by professional.
Okay. Okay, I'm ready to move forward with the vote, then, if everyone else...
The other edit would need to be about the, that there would not be a cost.
Right, I think...
Add that.
And we could just add, like, um...
And since that's not, I mean, that's not in the contract, the two dollars, so I don't think we need to...
Okay.
Yeah.
It's just changing the prohibitive.
Just for board record, so that we can vote on it accurately, we will move forward with the MOU that basically states that the teachers may wear jeans without any holes or blemishes that look professional at no cost to the staff. Is there any discussion before we move forward? Okay. Okay, can we do a roll call?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Abstained, Ms. Bryant abstained.
Ms. Bryant abstained. Thank you.
Okay, uh, moving on to the next Teachers' Union MO, MOU. Recommendation to approve an MOU to not require bargaining unit members to work on school premises for scheduled record days per attached MOU. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Um, I can go ahead and read this. This memorandum of understanding entered into this, the day, oh, I'll save that for later, uh, between Mount Healthy City School District, Board of Education, and the Mount Healthy Teachers Association. Whereas the board and the association are parties to a collective bargaining agreement, the effective dates of which are July 1st, 2022, through June 30th, 2025. And whereas the collective bargaining agreement contains Section 9.100 record days, whereas Section 9.102 contained within said record days provides for the two half-days and twofold days of teacher work without students. It is now therefore agreed as follows. One, October 10th and March 14th shall be the half-record days for the 2025, 2022, I'm sorry, 2024 to 25 school year. Two, January 6th and May 23rd shall be the full-record days for the 24-25 school year. And three, the district shall not require bargaining unit members to work on school premises for these four scheduled days. Um, so can, before we discuss it, could I do a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion regarding this MOU?
Um... Again, would we be extending this beyond union members as well?
Yes, I mean, teachers, teachers that aligns in a different way, because they have to get their grades in, you know? When they do it, they eventually do have to. I would anticipate that if this goes through, then the classified would also put through an MOU.
Well, I don't mean just the classified. I mean, not every teacher is a member of the union, and this actually says bargaining unit members.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Would you want that to apply to every teacher, or just the ones in the union?
Um, I believe they're all covered, um, to a certain extent. I would have to clarify that with our labor relations protocol. But it's, it's not until, like, that they're put on, um, paid administrative week, that that is where they're, right then.
Got you. So, this would, right now, apply to the teachers, but I'm sure that Ms. Butler would then develop some type of MOU, even though the other side, it doesn't align the same way. You know, because like with the teachers, they have something they have to turn in one way or the other.
Their counts are also different. Our classified staff work less days than our certified. So, for two of those days, those classified staff are already off, so it would just be that half-day.
Okay. I'm still kind of hung up on the, it says bargaining unit members. So, even if teachers who are not members of the union, e- even if the, the rules would be covered by that, I just want to make sure that this is not...
They just don't have the lead rights when they're not members, but...
Okay.
The, the bargaining, it, it still affects them even though they can't go on.
And that's all just standard language in the community.
Okay.
Was there any other discussion? Okay, can we do a roll call?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the date of the next Board of Education meeting will be September 16th. At this time, we're actually going to enter into an executive session. Uh, what time is it? We're entering executive session at 7:55 PM. To get, huh? It does, on the other page.
I think it does, on the next page.
Um, this will be to consider one or more of the following items with respect to a public employer official. Appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation.
I'd make a motion, don't we go into executive session?
Second.
Okay. Can we do a roll call?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Make sure, I'm going to move those chairs.
Okay.